We're going to get started with the November meeting of the Chickewauga zoning board of appeals. Today is Wednesday, November 19th. Before we get started, I'll have Mr. Kenny Young lead us in the pledge to the flag. If everybody could stand and you're wearing a hat, please remove your hat. All right, a couple of things. Most of our decisions hopefully will be able to make tonight. If for some reason there is questions from the board where we need to further examine a property or a project, we may table your item for next month. Our meeting next month will be in the same chamber on Wednesday, December 17th at 7:00 PM. If your item is tabled or your project is tabled, you will not get another notification in the mail. So that's it's going to be on the 17th of December. If that happens, you would come back for that meeting next month if that were to be the case. First thing we're going to do is we have to make an amendment to the October minutes. So I'm going to make a motion to amend the resolution for 312 Allen Drive to read that the to approve the variance with the condition that gutters from the new garage will drain onto the property at the rear of 312 Allen Drive. Is there a second for that motion? On the motion, Ms. Worchak?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young?
Aye.
Ms. Alt?
Aye.
I vote aye. I'm going to do a roll call of trustees. Mr. Ms. Worchak?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young?
Present.
Ms. Alt?
Aye. A present.
Present and Mr. Miranda is present via Zoom. He is not able to vote through Zoom, but he is here to contribute any questions or comments he has on projects on the agenda tonight. All right, so we are going to get moving with our first tabled item. Mark Romanowski Esquire, Peter F. Hunt, 430 Dick Road. If you want to step up, Mr. Kenny Young is going to read your request.
Partial A under local law requires the rear when adjacent to a non-residential parcel, a setback of five feet, whereas the proposed demonstrates the setback of 2.83. Chapter 260. Article 3. Partial A under local law requires parking, loading and stacking areas to be 10 feet from any lot line, whereas the proposed would demonstrate a zero foot setback upon formation of the proposed shared lot line. Chapter 260, Article 6, Section 260-51. Partial A under local law requires rear lots landscape screening to have a depth of 10 feet, whereas the proposed would demonstrate upon separation a zero foot setback at the proposed shared lot line. Partial B, Chapter 260, Article 3, Section 260-30. Partial B under local law requires the rear yard when adjacent to a non-residential parcel, a setback of five feet, whereas the proposed demonstrates a setback of 2.83 feet upon formation of the proposed shared lot line. Partial B, Chapter 260, Article 3, Section 260-30. Partial B under the local law requires parking, loading and stacking areas to be 10 feet from any lot line, whereas the proposed would demonstrate a zero foot setback upon formation of the proposed shared lot line. Partial B, Chapter 260, Article 6, Section 260. Particle, partial B under local law requires interior parking lot landscaping at an additional 5% or 805.9 square feet, whereas the proposed would demonstrate well under the required interior parking lot, landscaping at a negligible measurable amount. Partial B, Chapter 260, Article 6, Section 260-51. Partial B under local law requires front yard screening at a depth of 25 feet, whereas the proposed would demonstrate a depth of 15.29 feet. Partial B, Chapter 260, Article 6, Section 260-51. Partial B under local law requires rear lot landscape screening to have a depth of 10 feet, whereas the proposal proposed would demonstrate upon separation a zero foot setback at the proposed shared lot line. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mark Romanowski for Peter Hunt. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here again on this application. We were here at last month's meeting and there was a public hearing on the request for the variances. Mr. Kenny Young did a excellent job of reciting all the variances that were requested. And as this board may recall, the the bulk of the variances are really just created along the split between the two buildings. So that was a need for the bulk of the variances as this split is creating essentially the lack of setbacks between the two parcels. As we discussed at the last meeting, there are no changes proposed whatsoever physically to the lot. So this is not about any physical changes to the property whatsoever. It is merely to facilitate the subdivision. Ms. Worchak, there's no physical changes whatsoever to the lot. What what is physical about it? I'm not following you. Oh, there's two access points already to the site. Those two access points are going to remain. Well, certainly, yeah, if we don't get some of these variances, then then we end up losing parking spaces. Yes. Well, certainly, they're all related variances because they all arise from the split of the lot. Yeah, that's from my application package. I think you're looking at the wrong drawing. So the the drawing that you're looking at there, that has to do with zoning districts. It has nothing to do with the lot configuration. So instead, if you take a look at Exhibit A of our package, which you should have in front of you, that's actually the two lots that will be created and it shows it's merely a split right down the middle in between the two, essentially in between the two buildings. So there's two buildings on the site and the lot split is right between them.
So how many buildings are to testing?
No additional buildings whatsoever. So there's two buildings on the property today. The only reason for the split is to have two separate parcels for ownership purposes. So the buildings will remain. No, there's no change in zoning. So the zoning stays the same. There's no, no changes. Correct. Yep, correct. Yep. So no change in the zoning, no change in the physical conditions of the property. It's just to create a property line between the two structures so that we can sell it to the law office that's looking to go in there. Well, well, a condition of the sale is that the variance is approved, so the lot can be subdivided. So we have a, we have a signed purchase and sale agreement. Yes, that would certainly hurt the transaction and prevent an employer from coming into one of these buildings.
We don't know what's going in and tell us who is.
I've already told you several times this evening that it's going to be a law firm. A law firm. So a law firm is the is the purchaser of the of the potential purchaser of the property.
Of one of the property, one of the.
Yes, and Hunt will remain in the other one. So Hunt will retain their offices in the building that's really fronts North Creek Drive. And then the 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 building that's at the front on Dick Road will be where the law firm goes.
What bothers me the most because that area was very pretty. When it had the big tree up there and the offices that were put up on top were really beautiful and it looked stunning from Dick Road, okay? Now suddenly the tree is gone to make room for more sales for Mr. Hunt.
No, the tree was removed because the tree was dying and dropping limbs.
Okay, let me, let me just finish what I'm saying.
Okay.
The tree was there as one of the most beautiful trees that was on Duke Road, Dick Road rather. And that was a turning point. Everybody that made a left-hand turn by the four lights that are in that area always saw that tree. But anyways, the tree is gone now. Then when you drive down north of
North Creek.
Yeah, down the road, okay, along, along the property line. You drive through there till you come to, I believe, another four-lane highway. However, that whole property in the center is a park. So you're changing the complete complex of the neighborhood.
I I fail to see that because there's no changes to the site.
There is. How can you go by down north? What's this again, north? North Creek Road. Okay, North Creek goes in the center. South Creek is on the other side of this medium. That is a park. The park belongs to the people that fought for it for many years all the way down to the name of the street again, the crossroad. What is it?
Nagel.
Nagel Drive, correct. And that is all parkland. The town takes care of it. The people have a bridge on there that goes from one side to another. So this to me is a parkland and it would really change the character of the neighborhood with something like this being cut in. And we have no assurance that this is going to be an attorney. We have no assurance about nothing. We're just taking your word for it.
Well, again, we've, we've made statements about what is going into that office. We've repeatedly stated there's no physical changes in here. So I I candidly and respectfully, I disagree that there's any changes in the character of the neighborhood.
And I'm pretty ticked off about it too.
Okay.
Here is the letter from the state of New York. And I'm sure somebody from your office or our office got it. And another thing here, it talks about granting a variance for 430 and 432 Dick Road, which is not even the same complex as this is.
Yes, it is.
It's totally different.
No, it is not.
It is. It's not the same property.
Ms. Worchak, it's the same exact property?
No, it isn't.
Okay, well, our application is for the same exact property. The materials are quite clear.
Listed on the application.
It is on page two of my application. It is also repeatedly through my documents where I cite the two properties that are involved.
Application, all we have is the.
Actually, page one, we don't even have to get to page two. You can look right on page one.
On page one, let's say.
Exhibit A, proposed surveys for 430 and 432 Dick Road. The surveys attached to the application package detail the two parcels that are involved.
I never had that. I found it on here.
It was included with my original material, so I'm not sure why it didn't make it to you.
But still, you're changing, you're changing the lay of the land because from what I understand, you just took a tree out on 432 to make another roadway from Dick Road in there.
We've made no physical changes to the site since it was originally constructed.
Well, I'm sorry. I can't believe that. I think it would really conflict with the nature of the houses on North Creek. And the other reason too, you didn't even apply for anything from the village dispute. It was across the street and they have the same streets that follow through on their side.
I'm not sure what this has to do with the village dispute.
They did because I found out about that also.
Okay, does anyone else have any other questions about the application?
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment on the project for 430 Dick Road? Okay.
I'm going to make the.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to make a motion.
Mr. Miranda, do you have any questions? No.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the application for both 430 and 432 on grounds that would conflict with the present nature of the park park for the people there and change the character of the neighborhood.
Second, is there a second motion? To grant, he made a motion to grant the variance.
He can't do that. Are you kidding me?
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. On the motion to grant the variances as requested, Ms. Worchak?
No.
Mr. Kenny Young?
Aye.
Ms. Alt?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Al, he can't vote.
But what would he have voted?
No.
Thank you.
We're on to our second tabled item, Carrie Shank, 274 Booth Road.
Evening, I'm Ryan D. Waters, the other.
Oh, Ryan D. Waters, yep.
Yep.
Sorry about, I apologize. Mr. Kenny Young is going to read your request.
Chapter 260, Article, 274 Booth Road, Chapter 260, Article 6, subsection 260-59F1. The advocate Ryan D. Waters of 274 Booth Road proposes the installation of an eight-foot fence in the required front yard, where zoning law permits a maximum height of three and a half feet. The second one, Chapter 260, Article 6, subsection 260-59F3. The application, Ryan D. Waters of 274 Booth Road proposes one, the installation of an eight-foot fence in the rear and side yard, where zoning law permits a maximum height of six feet. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, folks. First of all, the first one, Chapter 260, Article 5, 260-59. We're not asking for anything in the front yard at all. So we're only asking for the side and rear fence.
So this is wrong?
Yes. On the existing thing, I got it right here, where my yard abuts an apartment complex lot and building fence will not affect. Yes, all I asked for was the two sides, not the entire fence, not the front. So that three and a half foot zoning was never a question.
Okay, so, right, so the way this is posted, we are going to have to repost this for next month because it's not listed. What you are asking for is not the way it was posted and publicly and on the agenda and put out to the public. So it's not that we can't, we can act on what is posted, but that's not what you're requesting. That's what I'm understanding.
Well, the second part is what I'm requesting. At my last meeting, I was completely unprepared for any.
No, and I remember and that, that's okay, except this is stating that you want an eight-foot fence in your front yard, which would be on.
No way. Yeah, I understand that. I wouldn't ask anyone.
The way.
Correct. What I'm asking for is not really visible from the street.
Correct, because you want to go down the side and to the rear, which we talked about last month.
Correct.
So we're going to have to, it's going to have to be reposted. We're going to have to take on.
Take that out.
To take that out. And so it's application, proposing installation of eight-foot fence, rear and side yard. It really should just be the one. It should really only be that second variance request.
Correct.
And what will that, that variance be?
Right, F3A is accurate because you want, sir, Mr.
Correct, that's accurate.
You want it.
Eight-foot fence in the rear and side.
Asking for relief on the side yard and on the rear.
Correct.
Which we have not made a decision on yet.
Correct.
But that's your request.
Correct, that's my request.
Which is the second, Chapter 260, Article 6, F3A, that's what he's asking.
Correct.
Foot fence in the rear and side yard.
Correct, and there was also some confusion of like the dumpster versus my fence last time from your pictures because it kind of looks like the same thing from the street.
What about the dumpster?
I don't know, but there was like confusion between my fence going all the way to the street.
Remember, no, right, your, your fence is on your property.
Right, yeah, my fence ends 10 feet from the street right now.
It's, it's the side yard.
Yeah.
So what I'm looking is the exact same footprint of what's there, not changing any of that.
Okay.
Just the height.
Yeah, so that first variance needs to get removed. That's not what he's requesting. And so this has to get reposted with just the second one. Does that make sense? Then I will, is anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment on 274 Booth? All right, I will make a motion to table 274 Booth. Second by Ms. Worchak.
So that'll be the 17th?
It'll be the December 17th.
Yep, thank you much for your time.
You're welcome. Have a good night. On the motion, Mr. Kenny Young?
Aye.
Ms. Worchak?
Aye.
Ms. Alt?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. All right, our first new item is Annika Colston, AC Power 48 LLC, Ingersoll Rand Company 3695 Broadway. Mr. Kenny Young will read your request.
Where is the advocate, Anna? Annika Colston?
I'm attending on her behalf from AC Power.
Okay. Of AC Power, on behalf of the owner, Ingersoll Rand Company for 3695 Broadway, Chief of Work in New York seeks to establish the land use of privatized battery energy storage, of which is not permitted nor defined within M1 Light Manufacturing District. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Peter Sorgi. I'm the project attorney from the firm of Hopkins, Sorgi and McCarthy. If it's okay, can Terry approach just to present a little bit bigger concept plan?
I'll take one for Ms. Alt.
So we are here today seeking a use variance. I believe Mr. Young said this wasn't defined or permitted in the district. It's not defined or permitted anywhere in the zoning code, in fact. So we are seeking a use variance to put a battery energy storage system. I will get to the the legal portion of it, but I think the first thing is to, this use is a relatively new use, which is why it's not in your zoning code. It's not in many zoning codes. There's a few in Western New York right now. So I would just ask just if you could just explain exactly what the use is. But just to be clear, the property itself is approximately seven acres. We are using about one acre. This is a brownfield site. It is actually a New York State superfund site. So contamination, there are very, very few uses that you can use this property for. And this, this is, we feel is a good use, which is why we selected this site. But if you, if Ken Schick can just explain the use, please.
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, everyone. As Peter commented, this, we are planning to develop the site into a battery energy storage system project. Simply spoken, it is going to be a set of batteries enclosed within weather-rated containers, which will draw energy from the grid during times when energy is cheapest and inject energy back into the grid when energy is most expensive. Is that better? How that helps is consumers like you and I, it helps by bridging the demand, the gap between demand and supply and therefore decreasing the cost that you and I have to pay during these moments where energy costs are high. Obviously, this also helps with brownouts by preventing them and also helps with voltage and frequency regulation of the grid. Like Peter commented, this is going to be a small footprint, one acre, barely one acre of a seven-acre site and the developments or the improvements are going to be minimal.
So just to take this, I will knock that over, I promise you. So again, we are here for a use variance. This is a different use variance standard. It's, it's called the Public Utility Use Variance Standard. You actually approved a use variance for a solar project from the same company in August of last year. And you utilized that. So I know we submitted a whole bunch of case law, which we probably submitted before, but there's really.
It's this project.
The other project was on Indian Road and I actually do have the minutes. 777 Indian Road. And I have the minutes of that meeting if, which I'll present to you at the end. So the use variance standard is different than the typical, the, the public utility use variance standard is different than the standard use variance standard, which has four prongs. This only has two. One is that we have to demonstrate need. And I think Kim Schick just explained the need for this type of project. Secondly, we have to damage, we have to explain why we can't put it in an area that's properly zoned. Usually what that analysis is, is you have to look at where it's zoned, explain why you can't use those parcels. Here, it's not zoned anywhere, which again, most zoning codes don't have it. These are something a lot of towns are now looking to zone. We chose this site because it's, it's zone manufacturing, light industrial. It is a superfund site. It backs up to the railroad. I do have the minutes from that meeting that I'd like to present to you. We also have reached out to four nearby property owners. We've submitted letters to them just to reach out, introduce the project and see if they have any questions. So it's okay, I just want to submit these for the record. In terms of process, we have been in front of the environmental advisory committee. Yeah, I'm sorry, from those minutes, I did highlight just the relevant parts where you use this standard because I know it's a, it's a bit different than what is typically used.
I do have a lot of questions. So before we get into all this, I always have a lot of questions.
Good.
Okay. All of the towns in the area have not gone with this at all. Okay, because the federal government, all right, has not come up with any standards because there aren't any standards. And it is something that we're toying with again. It's already in a superfund site. Well, no, it's not going to hurt anything. It's not going to hurt anything more, but it doesn't mean that it's not dangerous. And every motor, every new car that comes out, the electric cars, everything is done with these lithium batteries. And they're one of the most dangerous things you can have in possession on any site.
Okay.
Correct?
Yeah, well.
Because I just read an article also from Lackawanna, New York, which did have a major. Cause I just read an article also from Lackawanna, New York, which did have a major fire by storing those batteries also. I'm concerned. When I saw this, I can't believe it. I went to the site, and there's a great big mound of dirt or whatever. You couldn't really see where that was going behind the building, but that was for a reason.
Okay, understood. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna answer those questions for you. The reasons mo- most towns right now are, as you just stated correctly, are considering putting them in the code and where they should put them in the code. Because if you don't have it in the code, then an applicant can come in for a use variance, and it's a bit easier of a path forward if you don't have it zoned a certain way. Because again, what you typically have to do is prove why you can't put it in an area where it's zoned properly. So it makes sense. And a lot of towns are looking at, there are sites that do have these, uh, Blaisdell has has a battery energy storage system, much, much larger than this one. Um, in terms of the the danger and the standards and whatnot, I'll let Kim Chick explain it, but these essentially will appear, they'll look like almost like a self-storage facility. That's that's about the size of them. Um, in terms of the batteries, can you get into?
Certainly. Um, thank you for your concerns. The one distinction I would like to draw is EVs, our cell phones use lithium ion batteries, whereas our endeavor is to use lithium ion phosphate batteries. Uh, how that changes is that thinking about the fire triangle, we need fuel, we need oxygen, and we need temperature. I'm trying to eliminate the presence of oxygen, which would completely prevent the cases of fire. And even if there was a fire, it would not be self-sustaining. To add to your point about our designs, we have several design standards, starting from the cells to the batteries, to the battery packs themselves. And I talked about whether enclosed, uh, enclosures, they too are rated for fire prevention.
But any place close to that and close to a railroad, and the railroad's up front, there's another railroad in the rear, the town goes to Union Road, we've got our whole complex there. It's a very dangerous situation.
Well, we we will explain that, but that, I mean, respectfully, there's there's two other approvals that we would need. We would need site plan approval from the town board.
Right.
And we also need an approval from the DEC to change the use of a superfund site. So, but we need that, we need to get through just the zoning first, and we are more than happy to answer these questions. But again, the the standards that you have to vote on are 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 two standards. Is there a demonstrated need? And can it be put i- in a different location that's properly zoned? And there is a demonstrated need for this type of power, this type of 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 use. And in terms of another area, it's not zoned in any other area. So that's.
I know, but you don't go to, you don't go to Williamsville, you don't go to Snyder, you don't go to Clarence, you'll come to Chick to walk.
I've worked on solar projects in in Clarence. Uh, village of Williamsville, it's a little tough. There's not a lot of open space there.
Well, we have too much of that is polluted in the town of Chick to walk. No matter where you turn, it's polluted.
Right, but but I guess what I'm saying is, eh, these type of uses are 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 going to start happening because it's it's a need. We're using more and more electricity, and we're having more and more issues with electricity. I mean, people argue about different, you know, sources of electricity. Anyone who really understands it says we should be going after every source of electricity, whether it's wind, solar, gas, et cetera, all of those things. So this is a very good thing, and it helps sustain the prices by storing the electricity essentially. Um, in terms of the safety concerns, I mean, just just so we we're we're clear here, we're we're here on a use variance. That's not one of the criteria. We'll answer the questions. The Environmental Advisory Committee, we did address some of these issues with them, and we we really, they recommended a negative declaration for the variance only. And they said, well, we'll have to get into all those other issues once we get to site plan approval. And that'll probably be much more extensive environmental review, and it'll also incorporate, uh, the fire department and and different sources like that. But we've got to get the use settled before we go.
Well, I want to know what I'm buying first. I'm not going to say, okay, I know we need that someday. We need to put all this to bed somewhere. But I don't want it in my backyard. I'll tell you that right now.
Understood.
I don't want it in my backyard, and I don't wish that on anybody. We've got a dump on Indian Road. We've got places that are full of garbage, things that were put there fifty, seventy-five years ago, and now the people are finally finding out what's there.
Right, but I mean, respectfully, that that doesn't have to anything to do with our project. I understand the overall concern.
Right. Exactly.
Thank you. Um, yes.
What about, and you briefly mentioned, uh, fire? If there were a fire there, what's the possibility that it would burn so hot that you couldn't put it out?
Those concerns are minimal, especially with the battery chemistry that we're trying to use. Additionally, we should think of this as layers to an onion. At the cell level, I'm providing protection with, we have fire detection then at the battery level, and then at the battery pack level. Within these containers, I have CO two detectors. I have remote monitoring twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, where if there is a gas leak, if there is any sort of even a hint of a fire being raised, the local fire department knows about it, and they're on the site before they can cause a fire. The enclosures themselves are rated for fire protection, meaning if there was a fire inside, there wouldn't be enough of it to actually blow out the container or expand beyond the container. So within.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be able to explode like a battery in a in a cell phone?
With, uh, with the codes that I'm adhering to, as well as the security, multiple security features within these batteries, as well as these enclosures, it is a stark possibility, if at all. Uh, I also want to talk about the battery, the fire prevention within these containers itself. We have linings of fire retardants within these containers itself. So the gas monitors that I talked about, if they indicate that even if a fire has started, even after all of this, they will automatically, uh, extinguish the fire. So there are multiple levels of security that we are talking about here, not just one. And, uh.
So would there be a a fire suppression system there?
There is within the container itself.
In foam or what? What would that be made of?
Uh, depends. Uh, we could go with foam. There are other options available as well. We haven't decided on that.
I think we'd be probably, we'd be meeting with the with the fire department to, you know, get their input once we get to the site plan.
Well, you you shouldn't have gone there first. You.
You can't go for site plan until you have the use established. So the use variance is the first step in the process always. It's almost like we needed a rezoning. You have to get the rezoning before you actually go for the site plan. We have not fully designed the site plan. You're looking at a concept plan. We know it's going to be about this size. You can describe exactly what they're going to look like, but we will submit full engineering drawings at the site plan level. And at that point, and again, we discussed this with the EAC because they had similar questions. And we, when we said as well, we're not there yet. This is the use variance. There's only two criteria. Is there a need and is there a place zone that you should be putting it? Um, and that's it. And that basis, they said, okay, that makes sense. We're going to recommend a negative declaration on seeker for the use variance, and then once it gets to site plan, we will get into the extensive. You know, so I I do understand the questions. We'll be happy to supply more information or the code you're referring to, because I think that you said that there wasn't regulation.
Uh, I can talk about the various safety standards, but if we could pull Google Maps up, there is a functional battery project about ten miles south of us, located at twenty twenty-six Electric Avenue. That project is about four times the size of the project that we are suggesting of this property. Blaisdale. Yep. That's not.
So you have to reply, so I'm sorry.
Is that the wrong address?
Nope. Uh, it's twenty twenty-six Electric Avenue, but Blaisdale. This is Hamburg. Yeah. It's spelled B L A F. Yep. And if you could give me a street view, please? So to your right, you see existing electric utility infrastructure, but to your left, barely visible at this point, is of project which is operational and four times the size that we are suggesting here. So we do have examples in and around the area which have started operations, and the footprint is minimal. The height, the location, uh, we already have examples in the air.
Okay, the infrastructure in the right is not part of our project.
Yep. Yep. So think of an oversized shed, maybe a large garage. That's the closest analogy for this.
And this is again, four sized, four times the size of what we are proposing.
Yep.
At this site.
I I have a question. Um, if this location is four ti- or the site is four times larger, why is the site you're proposing here in Chikwaga a quarter of that size? Why is it so much smaller?
Uh, project economics, I would say. So I'm configuring my batteries to only discharge for a maximum of four hours. You could obviously go larger, but that's what works for this project. So we are not going to discharge at four hours at a time. It's going to be burst, and which is why batteries are quickly dispatchable energy resources. So we didn't find the need to go with such a large footprint of project, and also battery chemistry changes, where I could achieve greater energy density in a smaller footprint.
So so you may be using a different battery, a different technology.
Correct. Like I said, yep.
Yeah.
Is this your company?
No.
No. And, um, I did read an article on that West Seneca a few months ago was, you know, debating about, you know, this technology, and we're concerned about safety issues. They put a temporary moratorium on moving forward. Is this something, is this you guys or a different company? And do you know what the update is on that?
We're not proposing anything in West Seneca. I I think, I think I understand what what some of those towns have done. There's more that that have done that as well. Grand Island, I think, has a moratorium. They just came out of it, and they're now enacting their federal energy storage law to dictate where they go and so. Um, and it's just because, you know, zoning, like all laws is reactive. Four years ago, we weren't, you know, it was only put in it's above cell towers, maybe fifty years ago. But, you know, when there's newer technology out, it's, it's, it jumps. Uh, so that that doesn't make sense with our stuff.
Hmm.
So what's the life expectancy?
Twenty-five to thirty-five years.
Twenty.
Is what we're seeing.
So what happens after that?
There's a decommissioning plan. So it's just like a solar project where where there, there has to be a decommissioning plan. There has to be a bond in place in case they don't decommission it, and the money is available for that. There's also one other that is a project like this is that it's it's going to either for taxation or pilots yield a lot more money for the town. And then typically, these type of projects have post mini agreements, which is something that you can use for other things like parkway, et cetera, in terms of finances. So, yes.
So these batteries go in a landfill?
Uh, when they're done.
Maybe currently, but certainly not twenty-five years from now. We're already seeing companies spring up where they're finding a next use for this. So maybe you could use these batteries for other purposes, but twenty-five years down the line, it's difficult to say.
It's not, they're not being like, oh, right now, they're just like.
Hmm.
If they're often, it's not a lot of battery, definitely, because it's fairly new. So, um, but they are the battery that are out there. Or reharnessed.
And to your questions about safety and standards, uh, I would like to draw your attention to page number two, where in the battery energy fast facts have listed the standards that in the sheet we must have received. Please, I'm. Should have received it.
Yeah. No, that that is a submit.
So the industry has learned from, um, years and years of operations of these sourderr batteries, and I've listed out all the different standards that I'll be adhering to, not just at the battery level, but also the cell level, the pack level, and the enclosures. And also, we talked about how we're going to prevent any sort of issues, and if there were to be issues, how to identify them, and then our response to it. That's outlined in our plan.
You were saying that our town, our business was someone that had studied all this information. And then on the very, our. Project for this guy in here, not you guys on the front of a car. And just for the, for the, okay. That really is filled.
In terms of, in terms of zoning code or in terms of the the whole?
The whole.
But, but that.
We had a bunch of, the bad guy who was in charge of all the firey partners and anything that would come in, get so long up and, unfortunately, he died. And I know he's got another gentleman that was charged with it. With the firey partners, we know. I have no idea.
But but he had everything on everything because of the railroads. The railroads themselves are hazardous, especially when they come in with all the junk that they carry.
But I mean, again, these are, we're getting beyond the scope of this. In terms of the environmental review and discussing the safety and the various codes and whatnot, that will happen at site plan. I mean, this is, it it just secondly, you said you did not approve the variance, this utility standard, but the minutes right here is spoken by Ralph Miranda, seconded by Justin Yip, Grant Varius, so. August of twenty twenty-four, they were dragged in on this use variance, or utility use variance standard. So again, it, I understand there's a lot of questions. We'd be happy to submit other information if you want more time to think about this, if you want to give us specifically what you're looking for. But the criteria, and and it's important for the public to know this too, you know, this board is not under discretion. It's not, do I want this, do I not want? Actually, you have to apply the criteria. There's two, two tests. Is there a need, energy wise, for this type of use? And secondly, is there a place that's properly zoned where you could put it? That was before you. So you could love the project, but if you don't think we need that.
And and to go to your point.
Yes.
We do not have property that's properly zoned to handle this. That's why you're here.
Yes.
Just like the last several months, we've had requests for above ground fuel tanks, where we don't have property and code to zone for that as well, that we sent this board sent back to the town board for them to make a decision and decide what they want to pursue in terms of having these ten thousand gallon above ground fuel tanks, where our code currently says they need to be under the ground. Now, do I want to see them above ground so they're more easily inspected? Yes, I do. Are they better than the ones that are probably leaking in the ground now? Yes, they probably are. But this board does not have the ability to change the town zoning code.
I agree a hundred percent.
And if the town officials in the town board would like to allow these battery storage, would like to have thousands of gallons of fuel sitting in a tank, then the town board needs to rechange the zoning code. And then you don't even have to worry about us. Because then the town board will give you permission to do whatever you would like to do.
Understood. Can I, can I just explain the the difference in those two examples just real quick from a zoning perspective and just bear with me. I've known this for twenty years. I'm a one-trick pony. All I know is zoning. Any other type of law, don't ask me a question. But in terms of zoning, the town has the legal right to ban almost any type of use. So in terms of above ground fuel tanks, that's something that, you know, if it's not listed, because one of the lines in your tunnel code says, anything not specifically permitted is hereby prohibited, right? That's a catch-all phrase. There's a few uses that either New York State or the federal government has said, okay, yes, zoning wise, you can ban almost everything. You can ban mining, you can ban land, but you cannot ban, you know, telecommunications in utility type things. Those are the one things that in in any code, they cannot ban it outright. So the first example, that, most people kind of are on a lot different, a much different, um, path to follow, because they've got to go to the standard use variance. The state has put together a different use variance that frankly, I'll use the word, it's easier for anything involving utilities, energy, that type of thing. So under state law, we have the right, you know, your town code, we have the right to apply for a use variance, and it has been the standard that's applied. I do agree, it would be the best case scenario for a town, for any town to say, okay, we want, this is where we want this zone. And a number of towns are looking at that. Again, it's it's a big task because, you know, it's tough for a town. I'm a town attorney in ten different towns, all in Pataras County. I understand the way it can go, especially those places where you're much more limited in terms of. Money to do things with, but, um, it it's, it's, it's a.
The right you will see eighty feet where twenty feet is required. We're already taking proactive measures so that there isn't noise or it's not unsightly. We talked about potential contamination. This site is already a super fun site. There is pre-existing contamination. We ourselves are not going to puncture the site. We aren't bringing any hazardous materials that would spill over onto the site. And we're building in an area that is free from any contamination and we would not be infringing on any institutional or engineering controls.
The site is regulated by the T N E C and the D E C would have to approve. The use after the town approvals, the D E C has to approve it.
What is your body think?
It would be a lot of regulation. You also mentioned environmental impact statement. We've submitted the environmental form and their application. If that was a meeting, you want to give it to your mailing address, your email, we could send you this information and whatever else we are going to be sending to the board. We can also send.
Someone climbed that fence and gets in there. Would you know that? Is there going to be any cameras or anything on site?
Not usually. These fences are usually seven to eight feet tall and we do have protection, but if someone were to scale that side, it's.
But there's, but again.
It's.
So it's got to look like a storage.
Storage container. So it would be next to impossible to get into the storage container to cause any harm to the batteries themselves.
For animals to be able to live in?
No.
At all?
No, it's a fence, steel fence. But to take care of that, we've also already performed a phase one environmental site assessment. And we've also performed a T N E threatened and endangered species review to see that we're not affecting any threatened or endangered species in the area. So we're taking care of not just human health, but also the flora and fauna that already exists.
Well, at this point, we have a motion by Mr. Kenny Young, seconded by Ms. Alt to table. On the motion, Ms. Wurchak.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young.
Aye.
Ms. Alt.
Aye.
Thank you. Seven seventy. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have Michael Davis, forty nine Kemp Ave. Kenny Young will read your request.
For property located at forty nine Kemp Avenue, the advocate proposes expanding the existing driveway at forty nine Kemp Avenue four feet. This expansion would be one foot from the property line where its zoning law requires a minimum of five feet. You have the floor.
Hey, thanks for having me. The reason why I'm here, I need the four feet to get my truck over to the side. So my wife can get in and out of the garage. It's kind of annoying to swap her cars around. She's a registered nurse on call. I gotta get up, move my car around in winter. I've gotten several tickets last year, so I just, I'm just trying to figure out something here. I'm worried it's against the zoning laws because it would bring me a foot from my property line. But I'm willing to not go to full length, maybe just half, four feet by like twenty five.
So you still will be a foot off the.
I'd still, yeah, but it won't be all the way down to the sidewalk from the garage. I can't go in the front there because the truck's too long. It will stick out in the sidewalk. That was the original ideal, but.
Or just neighbor too.
Anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment on forty nine Kemp Avenue? Their requests. I will make a motion to grant the variance as requested and that the expansion is one foot from the property line, seconded by Mr. Kenny Young. On the motion, Ms. Wurchak.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young. Ms. Alt.
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next item is Thomas Smith, six seventy six South Booth. Are you Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kenny Young will read your request.
The applicant, Thomas Smith of six seven six South Booth proposes a driveway expansion which includes the apron on a non-parking site. It is eleven feet directly in front of the principal dwelling where his only law does not permit it. The second one is the advocate, Thomas Smith of six seven six South Booth Road proposes a driveway expansion which includes the apron on a non-parking site. That is one and one half feet from the property line where its only law requires a minimum of five feet. You have the floor, sir.
Hi, thank you for having me. Yep. So if you could just pull up the picture that was attached with the application as well of the property. I only modified the current dimensions of the driveway going into my property, not towards the property line. The former driveway was only less than eight feet wide. I drive a Chevy Silverado pickup truck. I have a boat and a jet ski that I was not aware before I moved in Chikdawaga that you cannot park anything on unpaved surface. So this is just my best attempt to make sure that I'm following that, that town law of parking on a paved surface as well as trying to upkeep my property. The dilapidated state of the old driveway was really becoming a safety hazard for people walking by on the sidewalk. I believe it was the original driveway when I did some research into it. There was grass growing in the middle of it. It was really just an eyesore for the neighborhood. So I believed it best to expand the driveway in towards my property line. And I'm also aware that the town code states that there should be five feet from the property line. However, I'm only replacing what was originally there on the adjacent property line closest to that yellow house to the right there in that picture. So I didn't go in any further and any expansion made is going in towards my property line. Um, I.
Because on one picture on Google, it still shows some vegetation.
Okay. Correct. I actually allowed the Chikdawaga Building Department and the inspector to come and take precise measurements on it. So whatever you're seeing in my application here, yes, yep. Oh, Eric. Yes, ma'am. Correct. There was. I mean. There is not. I believe. Um, which, which.
Up off the driveway now.
Uh, behind the house or on the side near the property line with my neighbors.
I don't know.
Did you talk about the grass portion?
Yeah.
The grass portion. Um, I believe that is part of my property line.
Right, it is. I thought maybe you had a shed. Right.
What are your plans to park there in the front?
Um, actually, for the most part, um, nothing. My, my jet ski will be parked kind of behind that mudroom part off to the side. It's actually going to be mostly out of sight. I just want to have my truck to be able to be on the side and able to step out of it and not step into the mud or anything like that. Or create any tire ruts on my lawn, which was also unsightly. Correct. I'm also on a non-parking side, so you know, I would have to walk across the street. And my neighbors also use that, uh, street parking across the street from me because they have a smaller driveway.
I had a question. Um, is this to accommodate like two or three cars wide?
Uh, just two.
Two, okay. And then where was your jet ski and other equipment going, like in the backyard or?
Um, no, it's, it's going to stay on the paved surface, uh, on the driveway.
And you park it in the back?
Uh, there's not a paved surface back there and previously I've been cited by Chikdawaga inspectors for having anything parked on the grass behind the driveway in the backyard.
Really?
Yes, actually, two or three times, yes. So.
They can come in your yard.
Yeah, you can't park on the lawn at all.
In the rear?
In the rear. One, uh, the most recent time I actually tried even parking it behind my house and I, yeah, it's got to be on a paved surface. I got cited.
How do you know it's back there?
Uh, they walked back there.
They might have got a complaint from the neighbor.
But same driving there, connecting with things, but great. All. I didn't see the wings on the outside.
We're seeing it.
What?
Like it was just all. Covered with green and the house was split back and it didn't have any vegetation like the pictures showed. I mean, I know you're working on it. I mean, I feel sorry for you. You're young and you're anxious.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Miranda just commented that. Eleven feet is a lot. We, I mean, we have granted variances to have the driveway go in front of the property in the past, but this is literally half, half of the front of the house.
So if you pull up my neighbors, not to that side in that photo, but to the other side. And then there is two or three houses in the immediate vicinity of my house that also have driveways that expand right over halfway in front of the house. And I believe most of those houses in that neighborhood were built to the same dimensions, twenty-four by twenty. So right there, if you zoom in on the red roof, that has the same width of the driveway. Across the street from that house, same thing. Same width of the driveway halfway in front of the house, right up to the front door entrance. So I don't believe it to be an abnormal, um, kind of driveway structure for that neighborhood.
It's a usual street, like I said.
Correct.
There are many streets like that in Chikdawaga and I, I can't name them all. I just like, you know, we shouldn't have wasted all that money putting grass in unless you were sure. Because that was going to be all right. And are there any steps in the front?
There, there are, yes. Um, no, there, I, I, I don't believe I needed a permit for it, but I used some quickcrete and I poured a pad back in front of it, uh, right where the sidewalk is. Yeah, it does. I recompleted the steps out to where the driveway pad is going, so.
Final, like total width of the driveway, if, if it's, you know, completed with your plan.
I believe that the width was eighteen, no, not eighteen. Um, it was drawn up in there for the drawing that I submitted with the application.
It looks like the original driveway was, and the survey is fourteen point eight one. And then adding eleven, so that would be twenty-six, almost twenty-seven.
Not, not twenty-seven feet wide. No, that's, at, at the most it was eighteen.
Yeah, in the survey.
Okay.
And then you're extending, because the survey right here is showing fourteen point eight one for the original driveway. So you're going up. Probably. Four feet, three feet, three and a half feet to the right and eleven feet to the left. So you're, it's probably almost thirty. That'll be thirty feet wide.
Uh, it's not going to be thirty feet wide. I mean, I could certainly. Okay. Yep.
This is fourteen eight one. Okay. You're going three and a half feet this way and eleven feet down. So you get eleven.
Still not understanding why you can't go straight back.
Uh, whoop. Here's something that might be helpful. I just found online in terms of just standard widths for driveways. This isn't Chikdawaga's code, but it's just was a more general, uh, width recommendation. It seems like twenty-four might be the widest for two car, to for a double car. Although I under, you know, since you're wanting to store additional equipment on there and vehicles, then I can understand how thirty might be. Anywhere between twenty-four and thirty might be more appealing.
Correct. I can always take it back three feet. That wouldn't be a problem if I'm at twenty-seven and the recommended width for a two-car driveway is a max of twenty-four feet. That wouldn't be a problem whatsoever. Um, just to answer Mr. Young's question as well as to why I couldn't go back. So if you bring back up the picture of the house, um, the mudroom off to the side. If you scroll over just a little bit, kind of protrudes out from the house on the side by at least four feet or so. Um, I can't really bring a vehicle like a Silverado back past that with that little single window there without risking, um, driving over onto my neighbor's property, which I don't want to do. That's not very neighborly. Uh, additionally, um, if I were to put a boat back there, the boat is a little bit wider than a vehicle too. So I risk damaging my property and or driving over into my neighbor's property. They also have a fence to the left of that garage back there. I don't want to risk damaging that. Yes, ma'am. Correct.
Else in the audience that wishes to comment on six seventy six South Booth?
Linda drove me there. Sophie looked at it too. It looks like the house is sunken further than any other house to on the road. But he did show some pictures that looked pretty good, so I don't know. Got to put steps in or something. It's not right not to have steps or a door without no way to get in.
Uh, I did put the steps back in right in front of the, um, I didn't remove the steps at all. I just poured another pad in front of them that connects to the driveway itself.
I, I will make a motion to grant the variance with the condition that the driveway is no wider than twenty-four feet.
Okay.
So whatever's currently there is going to have to get removed to make it from your neighbor's property line to twenty-four feet. Cause thirty, pushing thirty feet, we, we've never expanded a driveway that far.
Okay. Um, would you mind tabling then so I can come back next month with exact measurements for you?
Yeah, we can do that. Then I'll.
You definitely want to stay this way. But towards your property, towards property.
I know Ms. Wurchak asked this question, but that strip of grass, whose property is that? Or do we not know?
One point five foot of that is.
Because on this same street, there are other driveways that are like a shared driveway where the, the concrete meets the blacktop or vice versa. So I would like to know whose property that is. And then if we can, if you can find out from your neighbor, how we could utilize that strip because at this, at this point, that, that foot and a half of grass is for what? If it's your neighbor's property, then it's not an option. But if it's your property, then it might be an avenue to get you a little more space.
Okay.
But we need to know based on the survey whose property that is because you can't blacktop it if it's not yours.
Sounds good.
All right. So now I'll rescind my motion and I will make a motion to table. We'll, we'll address that next month. We'll address that next month. Second by Mr. Kenny Young. On the motion, Ms. Wurchak.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young, Ms. Alt.
Aye.
So biggest thing is find out on your survey who's strip that, that grass is. Especially because there you have neighbors, literally two houses down where they have a blacktop and a concrete joining with nothing in between.
And when we first started, I asked you, is that your property or your neighbor's? You replied your neighbor's, but it could have been yours to begin.
So we need, you need to find that out.
Yeah, okay.
At least start there and then we'll go next month for the expansions.
Survey, that looks like it's half and half.
Okay.
Still.
Whatever, they could fix that up.
Right.
That's good.
Work with it. Okay?
All right, thank you.
All right. Our next item is Leo Tios Bajas, Cybertron LLC, seven, seven, seven Arrow Drive. Are you, Mr. Bajas?
I'm not. My name is Tyler Richardson. I work for his company, Erie Painting and Maintenance, that's located at nine, nine, nine Ride Road.
Tyler Richardson?
Yes, sir.
He addressed their company.
Nine, nine, nine is, uh, Erie Painting and Maintenance. We are a bridge painting company. He recently purchased seven, seven, seven Ride Road.
Uh, all right, Mr. Kenyon's going to read your request.
The applicant. Leon Tios Bajas.
Leon Tios Bajas.
Representing Cybertron LLC of seven, seven, seven Aerial Drive proposes the installation of an eighty-foot flag. Flagpole placed at an intersecting point thirty feet from both the front and side property lines. Where his only law allows a maximum height of twenty feet. The location is beyond the boundary of any height restrictions for the airport. You have the floor.
Yeah, so correct. So we are just trying to put up a giant flagpole. Very patriotic company. He had me, excuse me, he has me to step in today. He's working on finishing up a couple of bids. I actually just recently got back last week from Africa, uh, with a deployment with the New York Army National Guard. This is something that we're very passionate about as we've been expanding the company and into Cybertron, which is another company. And we're just very patriotic as a company. Uh, he's really excited about this project.
So Cybertron is going into the building?
Correct.
But Erie Painting and off the building. So they're leasing it to Cybertron?
It's a second company of his. I'm not sure this, it is, it's a separate company. Correct.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be eighty feet.
Because he has a motto of go big or go home, sir. Yeah. Yes. I don't, but as of the letter, like I said, I just got back right here. It says it's loc, it's outside of the boundary of any restrictions for the airport itself. Correct. I believe it's just addressing the fact that the zone variance there is twenty feet is the limitation. And we want to get it outside. So that is a commercial industry, uh, area. So there's a lot of trucker traffic. So we figured higher, it stops everything. We went thirty feet off of the interior of the sidewalk just to keep it any chance of really interfering whatsoever. I believe it's fifteen by twenty. Fifteen feet by twenty, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not sure if they had it listed here. Yes, fifteen by twenty-five. I apologize. I just, I just say I didn't hear what you said.
I says, why not?
Right.
Okay, I'm in a motion.
Motion. Uh, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment on seven, seven, seven Arrow Drive? Okay, so first, uh, by Ms. Wurchak. Second by Mr. Kenny Young. On the motion, Ms. Wurchak.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young.
Aye.
Ms. Alt.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. You're all set.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Our next item is Alamosman Chow, Chow Hary, twenty-five eighty-one Genesee Street. Mr. Kenny Young will read your request.
The applicant, Alamosan, Al, Alamosman Chowari.
Yes.
Of twenty-five eighty-one Genesee Street proposes the installation of a six-foot fence that is twenty inches from the side property line, where his zoning law permits a maximum height of three and a half feet. You have the floor.
I want to say the insecurity of my house.
Speak into the mic, please.
Safety insecurity. On my house.
A privacy fast.
And six feet. I own.
This right on the corner, right?
Yeah. I know. Yeah. What about it?
Yeah, six.
It also is the height, no, it's the height too. It's the height and.
And.
And. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment on twenty-five eighty-one Genesee Street? Okay, um, this item, twenty, twenty-five sixty-four, twenty-five eighty-one Genesee Street is missing a request on the variance. So it was published wrong, not your fault. Um, so what we're going to do is we're going to, I'm going to make a motion to table it for next month. So it's republished correctly for what you're asking for.
I left twenty feet.
Right, but the way it was published.
But the front side, I don't give that front side. Just my corner house. This left front side, I, I left twenty feet.
Right. So we understand what you're asking for, but the way it was, the way it was published is not what you're asking for. So we want to make sure it's what you're asking for. So next month on the seventeenth.
Okay.
If you can come back on Wednesday, the seventeenth of December and we'll address it next month at seven o'clock.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, I made the motion to table, seconded by Mr. Kenny Young. On the motion, Ms. Wurchak.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young?
Aye.
Ms. Al?
Aye.
And I go aye. Uh, twenty-five eighty-one is table, Hennessy is table until September seventeenth. Our next item is Brian Kajemowski, two ninety-four North Sign Drive.
Thank you.
The applicant South Line Little League located at two ninety-four North Sign Drive has outdoor recreation activities that occur less than fifty feet from a budding uh residential districts, whereas zoning law requires a fifty-foot setback from any outdoor recreational activities that abut a residential district. The second one is the applicant South Line Little League located at two ninety-four No- North Sign Drive has installed a five and a half foot chain length fence, fence with a twenty-foot net on the top to capture baseballs along the baseball diamond abutting the rear property line, which is a resident, residential district, whereas zoning law allows for a maximum height of six feet and also does not allow for any type of fence topping. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, my name is Brian Himenowski. I am on the.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I'm on the executive board for South Line Little League. Uh, I reside at forty-four Park Place and uh my purpose here this evening is to represent the Little League. Um. Obviously, we have submitted for uh relief from existing conditions. Um, if I could, I'd just like to go over a little bit of history uh with the Little League. So there are two diamonds, which are the smaller diamonds, uh we refer to as Diamond One and Diamond Two. They're closer to the parking lot and a butt to Martinique Drive. Uh, those diamonds were built in the late nineteen eighties, early nineteen nineties. Um, as the league grow, as the league grew, um, and our enrollment increased in the thirteen to sixteen-year-old age groups as well as girls softball, uh, we found the need to build another diamond, which we refer to as the Diamond Z, which butts up against the property line for um, or against the property line where the uh Woodgate residents reside. In all three instances, the three diamonds, they do have outfield fences. The existing two smaller diamonds, those fences, I believe are four feet high. Uh, the fence that um is the outfield fence for Diamond Z, which is the larger diamond, um, that fence is currently about six feet and then there is a twenty-foot netting that runs from the left field foul line to about left center field. Uh, that netting was installed uh to prevent uh balls from going into the adjacent neighbors' backyards uh that live on Woodgate Drive. Uh, that diamond, uh, which is the largest diamond, Diamond Z, that was built probably in the early two thousands. I don't have the exact date in front of me. Uh, but that diamond was built in the early two thousands. Uh, we used it for about ten years. Um, membership and enrollment declined. Um, we in turn uh made a decision not to use that diamond anymore for obvious reasons. And then over the last couple of years, our membership and enrollment in the thirteen and sixteen-year-old boy age group and the uh girl softball group has increased tremendously. And we found the need to reutilize that diamond. Um, as a result, within the last year, we invested about twenty thousand dollars into the infield and outfield of that diamond to make it playable for the uh, for the kids. So the um outfield fences uh on all three of those diamonds, uh, they have been existing uh since the mid, I'm sorry, since the late nineteen eighties, early nineteen nineties. And again, the larger diamond, uh, that outfield fence has existed since uh the early two thousands. And what we'd like to do today is um seek the approval of the uh, the zoning board to allow us to maintain those fences as is. Um, if we would have to move those fences, it would be a considerable financial hardship for us to um relocate those, relocate the diamonds, reconfigure the diamonds. And as a not-for-profit organization, we just don't have the financial wherewithal to do that. So that's where we are today.
Okay, um, there's about ten folks that signed a petition. I'll, I'll read what they signed here.
Okay.
We, the residents of Woodgate, Martin, Martinique and Brentwood Drive strongly oppose the variance request by the South Line Athletic Association to let the illegally installed fence on Diamond Z to remain in place. The increased usage this year of the ball diamond that is surrounded by this fence is a hindrance not only to my household directly, but our entire neighborhood and is against the town code two sixty dash thirty-four CF Community Facilities District C seven. So this is what your neighbors are saying.
Okay. You know, the only. I mean, the only thing I can say at this point is um, it is a park. It's a recreation site for um the kids and the youth of the area. Um, I guess I'd rather have the kids on the ball diamonds than on the streets, and I think that's something important to consider. Um, they are playing baseball there. Uh, they're not doing anything nefarious. There's just regular baseball games. The largest diamond of the three, um, which um, are you referring to? Um, that has no lights on it. So there's no baseball that's being played in um uh the late evening hours. Only baseball that's being played in the late evening hours are the two smaller diamonds. Um, again, uh, that fence in that park uh has been there since the early two thousands. I, I don't understand why all of a sudden that there is, has been an objection to it. Um, I know in the past, uh, maybe the past year or two, and this really is not um, as a result of the fence location, but there were some issues with noise that was um uh coming from the diamonds. Um, kids playing baseball, um, the number of people we had at the park and the diamonds, and also probably some of the music that was being played when the kids walk up from the dugout to the batter's box. And then once that happens, the music is turned off. Um, that is something I believe we've been able to resolve with the residents, specifically the, the music and be able to keep the noise levels down because we do understand uh that could be a hindrance to the neighbors, both on Martinique and Woodgate. And we've made a concerted effort uh as we ended this past season to make sure that uh that noise has subsided.
Um, we spoke, we spoke on the phone the other day.
Yes.
Um, were you able to get any photos of the twenty-foot net?
Yes, I have.
From the outfield?
Sure.
Mind if I? Yeah, you can just bring them up. I didn't, I didn't get over there to see it. Is it's? That's fine. We can pass down.
But there was a room full of people here before. A room full of people regarding your.
Now. We did speak on the phone, but while, so it's on the record. Now, is there any plans? Did you, were you able to find out? Is there plans for this netting to stay up all year or is it just during the season?
Well, as of right now, the way it looks is that netting is, is up for the year.
Okay.
But if it's something that we need to take down over the winter months, um, that's something that we can certainly do.
Isn't that going to obstruct birds and things?
No, because there's trees that are right next to, um, if you take a look at the pictures, there's a large tree that's right up against one of the fences and the tree is much taller than the netting.
I mean, I know you've been around a long time. I know people that are working here now. You're, years and years and, and they play ball there too. But after a while, what's gonna, what's gonna? Try to get more land or we can try to own it down and try to make a lot of growth. I know, I know at one point, uh, Little League played at lots of growth, but then there was a kind of altercation between the men's leagues and the little leagues. And then the little leagues were told to go there. Okay, so why can't they lose though? A regular park.
Because those, um, because travel baseball and men's power league baseball or softball, I should say, um, has grown so much that the majority of the use of the park, specifically Lawson Park is by the adults. Uh, the softball.
It is.
Yeah.
But why can't the kids get time in there? If we're renting it out to just men's leagues?
Mm-hmm.
I don't care what anybody says. The park belongs to the people that live here.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's important for, I mean, South Line Little League has, has been in existence for fifty-one years, okay? Um, you know, it's important. We're, we're a, a tight family league. We have about four hundred and fifty kids. So, you know, we like to keep all the kids at the park at the same time.
So it's your, your thoughts are you want to keep them there no matter what?
Ideally, yes. Sure.
That's all I needed to know.
Sure.
Um, is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment on two ninety-four North Sign Drive? If you could just um step up to the microphone and we'll get your name and address. Sure.
My name is Gloria Bataglia.
Gloria, Gloria.
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 Gloria. G L O R I A. And I live at twenty-one Woodgate Drive.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, I would like to apologize. I'm not familiar with the process here. So there are a lot of documents I could have brought. I did not, not knowing exactly what to expect. Okay, I am here tonight to express my objections to the variance request regarding the illegally installed fencing around the baseball diamond, specifically Diamond Z. Stepping way outside of my comfort zone, I created a petition and walked around to some of the houses to explain what the petition was about. Some residents on Martinique stated that the fence was sixteen feet from their property, not twenty-five per code. They planted trees, but it still doesn't do anything to dim the lights or, you know, block out the noise. On Woodgate, the three immediate, immediately impacted homes, mine included, the fence is fifteen feet away, not fifty as per code, fifteen feet. Not only is the fence too close, one of the former coaches back there decided to bulldoze the fields to create Diamond Z. By bulldozing that, he bulldozed in a drainage ditch, a fifteen-foot East Mid Drainage Ditch. What that does to my backyard is floods it. I don't really appreciate that after all these years, but that's what happens. So after many years of emailing the town board, talking to the previous town supervisor, even if I had a catcher in the grocery store and my concerns weren't addressed, I attended a town board meeting May twenty-seventh of this year to make sure that it became part of the record. Um, that evening, after the meeting, my doorbell camera recorded a drone at my front door at two thirty in the morning. Coincidence? I'm not so sure about that. Someone also informed me that none of my concerns that I emailed the town board about were being undressed, addressed until I attended that town board meeting. Then all of a sudden, code enforcement is going to come to my house regarding the music, regarding the fences. So gentleman did come up. He informed me he was only there to monitor the sound. He had nothing to do with the fence. That was going to be another code enforcement officer. So Brian Noack called me to acknowledge that the fencing was not up to code and the association was going to file a variance request. So although the fence has been in place for many years and I did voice my concerns and I do have some emails going back into the teens um about that, Diamond Z was not really being used for many years. So I just continued with my emails and this year it's being used extensively for games, for practices. And then the siblings from the kids that are playing on the other diamonds, they come over when there's not a game and they're just running around screaming, yelling. They were actually chasing baby deer with baseball bats. I wasn't happy about that. So through the years, we have put up with light shining directly into our house, dust bowls created um from the grading of the diamonds and Diane Benchowski, when she was supervisor, had spoken to the association president at that time. They were supposed to kind of wet down the diamonds to avoid all the dust and everything. Um, that doesn't happen anymore. We ended up dismantling our pool because we couldn't deal with the dirt in the pool every day. Um, the music was so loud that the dishes in my china cabinet actually rattled. So uh, town police officer came at my suggestion, at my call, and he suggested that maybe I should move. And did I take pictures of the dishes rattling in my cabinets? I had my house built in nineteen eighty-one, when only a single diamond was in place. And it wasn't really being used because it was owned by the West Seneca School District at that time. So should I move? Should I have taken pictures? I don't think so. In an effort to avoid any undue stress for myself and my husband, we went camping for their weekend year-end picnic. And honestly, I'm a little bit too old to be sleeping on the floor of a tent. So for their movie night, we rented a cabin to the tune of almost four hundred dollars. Can you please tell me why I have to spend four hundred dollars to leave my own home? So I don't have to deal with a, a movie literally blaring in the neighborhood for two and a half hours. The season used to end about the first week in July and we could almost live with that. They didn't have the music back then because Diane Benchkowski put a stop to that for us. Now they have added fall ball, more diamonds, blaring music, and the season continues until the middle of October. Basically, our backyard is unusable due to the noise from March to the middle of October. And I spend most of my evenings from five-thirty on locked in my house with my windows closed. I shouldn't have to live that way. I pay five grand in taxes for an unusable yard. A tax-exempt ball association is allowed to destroy, along with many others, my quality of life. This is my home. This isn't entertainment for me. It's my home. In closing, we are requesting the variance request be denied as I believe moving the fence per town code would help keep the unsupervised kids closer to their parents, so they're not doing things they shouldn't be doing and eliminate some of the games on Diamond Z to create a little bit better environment for the neighbors, especially those on Woodgate. Martinique gets buffered from a lot of trees. The trees that were left on Woodgate, those people don't have a problem. But my house, I have a tree of, the gentleman took a picture of it today. Um, and they want to trim a lot of those branches so they can fix the last section of their, of their netting that they replaced last year. But the other three homes, there's no trees. That is just clear shot, netting and diamonds. There's no trees there. So we have had birds caught in there, ducks, geese. Um, we had a, a fawn that my husband, along with town of Chikdawaga Police, helped pull out of the fencing because his legs were caught while he was trying to hop over that fence. And an almost six-foot fence was a little bit too tall for a, a newborn deer. So basically, a lot of my neighbors are just fed up. The ones I talked to as I walked with the petition, and believe me, that was out of my comfort zone. They're fed up. They're just fed up with the noise. They're fed up with the constant from March to October. We're done with it. And I shouldn't have to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment on two ninety-four North Sign, sir? Once you get to the microphone, if you could just state your name and address for me, please.
Name is Mike Kana-K A N I C K, fifty Dartwood.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I was president of the South Line League uh for almost ten years. And I'm the one that built the, the ninety-foot diamond that everybody has complained about. Uh, just to address a, a couple of things, I mean, kids are playing baseball. Okay, there's going to be some noise. The reality in it though, in, in speaking of nighttime baseball, there isn't any, not really. Games start at six, they'll end at eight or before eight. The big diamond that everybody's talking about, Diamond Z, okay, does not have lights. Therefore, there's no night games except six o'clock and it'll, and it'll end at eight o'clock. With respect to music, even when I was running the league, please turn it down a little bit. I agree with that. But what, what happened subsequent there was what they call the press box behind home plate where they used to announce every game. where they used to announce every game, you know, now batting, you know, Kenneth Young. And they, you know, they're talking into a microphone, so people are going to hear it. That press box is gone. The games are not announced anymore. Is there still some music during the games? Yeah. Was it loud like before? I don't think so. But I'm old now and I wear hearing aids, so maybe that's my problem. Another thing I just want to point out, the diamond, the property was purchased in nineteen seventy-four. Okay? And when the first diamond went in, there's fencing in there, and all this had to be approved by somebody. Okay? When Diamond Z came along, the big diamond, we approached the town to get a permit to build the thing. Okay? And then, that was fine, we got our permit, we built a diamond. We paid for it versus anybody else, no outside, no nothing, but anyway. The fencing all went in, the fencing's been there since nineteen seventy-four. So, I don't understand why there's an issue with fencing. Okay? And the new diamond, like I said, the town approved it. Okay? Then we ran into an issue where some of the neighbors were saying, what if a ball's hit over the fence, it's going to hit my house? I understand that. But the fence is a couple feet shy of three hundred feet away. Okay, there's not many thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids that are going to put a ball over that fence. But let's say for sake of discussion, there is. And what happened a lot of times is kids are kids, and they need a place to play, and they go play in a diamond when no one's using the diamond. And once in a while, a ball will go over the fence. I understand. So, to stop that, we came to the town and said we want to put up some netting. And the town approved it. So, I today don't understand what the big issue is. I read this letter that I got, and it says that the fencing on that diamond is five-point-five feet, and the code says you can go six. Okay? But the netting goes twenty feet. Now, what that translates to, as I said before, just the fencing itself, you have to hit the ball about three hundred feet, okay? But with the netting up there, you're going to have to hit a ball equal to over four hundred feet before you get hit a house. And there's no fourteen-year-old going to do that. I don't know if I can do it, or you can do it. You know? So, I don't understand the big issue. I really don't. It was all approved by this town, by the town board at the time. I remember going to them, pleading with them, we want to build this diamond. And they signed off on a permit that night for me. Okay? So, it's all above board. The league did stop using a diamond for a while. The, like, he said, the population declined for the, you know, the kids playing. But they're coming back now. And there's not really a lot of games on that diamond anyway. So, I feel bad for the lady with, you know, that just spoke. She shouldn't have all kinds of troubles, but I don't know that half of them are happening. I don't know that a third of them are happening. Okay? I live right next to the diamonds, so I can hear a lot of things, too. I live in Fifty Dartwood. You know where the dead-end street cuts in on Dartwood? My house is on that corner. So, I just walk, you know, a hundred yards, and I'm in the property. But that's all I have to say, unless you guys have a question or anything.
No, thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
The netting that supposedly goes up on top, I don't have a clue. Because I certainly wouldn't like to have it by my house. I like birds, I like trees. And I feel sorry for the poor woman, too. I mean, you can't do that to people either because you like baseball. I like baseball, too. And I believe boys and girls should play baseball. I played on a baseball team, too. But however, you know, there comes a time when you're going to run out of room where you are. Are you going to be able to keep up with this financially? Is the South Line Fire Department going to be happy about paying additional fees? Perhaps even buying another piece of land somewhere else?
They're not going to buy another piece of land.
So, it's not South Line Fire Department?
Correct.
South Line Little League.
Yeah.
Two completely different entities.
It's completely different, okay. But it's nothing to do with the fire department.
Correct.
They're different spellings. Okay?
Okay.
Secondly, just forgot what I was going to say.
You're not for profit, you said before.
Yeah, we're not-for-profit organization.
Right.
You know, the fencing has been there literally since the diamond, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. The fencing for the two smaller diamonds has been in place since the late nineteen eighties, early two nineties. Okay? The larger diamond, which we refer to as Diamond Z, was put up in the early two thousands. And honestly, we do everything we can to be a good neighbor, and I understand, you know, the residents, if they hear noise, if they hear the kids playing, or whatever the case may be, and it's disruptive to them, you know, I understand that, and I'm not, you know, not trying to say that your concern should not be hurt, because they certainly should be hurt. Okay? But kids are going to be kids. I'm not aware, and if this is true, I never, I didn't see it, so I can't say, I'm not aware of any kids chasing deer with baseball bats. Okay? If it happened, and we knew about it as the board of directors, we certainly would have addressed it. As far as birds going into the netting, if anybody would have to take the birds down, it would be us. I'm responsible for the building grounds as well. I'm not aware of it. Maybe the birds got out before we got there. But I'm not aware of it. That netting was up there in the early two thousands, too, at one point. And then obviously, we took it down once we were not playing ball on that diamond anymore, until, you know, the last couple of years. But as far as playing games on that diamond, it is some wits. It is typically used, let's say, six o'clock, three o'clock on Saturdays, probably used most of the day on Saturdays. And the other two diamonds, they're being used just about every day.
I know.
How many kids would we have in the league? You know, and again, and say, it's a baseball park, it's a place for kids to play.
When they're playing, it's a part of the ball.
It's a family atmosphere there.
Yeah.
You know, that's something that should be encouraged. You know, we're keeping kids off the street, we're keeping kids from doing things they shouldn't be doing, and they're enjoying the course of America's path.
I know, I know.
So, you know, I think that's something that we're going to take into consideration, as well as if we have to relocate fences or do those type fences, that's a two-signaling financial hardship for us. And it's going to affect, I mean, literally, it's going to affect our family that will be doing for the upcoming season.
Can I ask you a question? How many kids played last year?
Four hundred.
Four hundred and fifty, okay? Back in the eighties, we had twenty-five-hundred kids playing. You want to hear some noise? That's back then.
I know, but those were different days. I know, because I lived around here all my life.
Yeah, I understand.
And I remember when the one teacher from West Seneca had a group of kids that were supposed to be down in the park on Lawson Road. And there was a big to-do about the Little Leagues over there, and we can't play over here. And it, and I think it was all just grown-ups fighting.
I think, I think he addressed the issue with that. It used to be that the overflow in South Line, the overflow in South Chikdawaga, the overflow in Beverly Hills, used to all go to Lawson Park.
But don't you think that right now, that someday you've got to think about this happening? That you're going to be overflowing to where you are?
The way it's going right now, I don't think that's going to happen for a while. I think it will happen. But that's going to be in a while, and then it has to be re-adressed. I don't believe, this is just my opinion, I don't believe South Line is going to buy any more property. Okay?
Well, I
Yeah, there's none to buy.
Related to the fire department?
No.
All along, yeah? I said I thought all along that you were related to the fire department.
No, no, it's a self-sustained corporation, New York corporation. Yeah.
But you use their name in other words.
Well, it's spelled, it's
Hey, I'm for you. I mean, kids need a place to play.
They're actually very good to us.
Or daycare, I see kids all the time, too. I hear screaming all the time, too, especially in the summer months.
Yeah. They're very, the fire company's very good to the baseball league, and the baseball league is very good to the fire company. So, it's a good marriage there.
But there comes a time, and you are going to run out of room. You can't put another diamond to go bigger. You can't do anymore.
No, but we can limit the number of kids playing.
Yeah.
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 The max capacity that we have, based on the number of coaches and time and resources and the diamonds, is somewhere around four hundred and fifty kids.
Yeah.
That's where we are at.
Okay, so you're just asking us to give you time for another year or so?
No. No, not at all.
What we're asking?
Oh, no, you're asking for, to fix the fence and back.
Oh, no, we're asking for the existing fences remain in place as is. And have been there, have been there since the inception of those diamonds being built.
Exactly.
Those fences were just not installed in the last couple of years. Those fences have been
Okay.
Have been replaced all this time.
So, how are they badly worn?
No.
Oh, it's that the fences need a variance. They should have got a variance a long time ago.
They should have had.
Yeah, this goes back to the late seventies again, early eighties. The town approved everything.
Well, you gotta do things by the book.
Yeah.
So, that's
And we did.
Play what you gotta do.
And that's exactly what we did.
What do we do?
I still get questions?
Yeah.
I'm done.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Ma'am, if you, I know you had asked, you had some other Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Al.
I had a quick question. Just looking at this diagram as part of the variance request, is this the only fencing question? Because you're saying fences, but I'm just curious, it's like, I haven't actually been on site here, so it's harder to visualize exactly which fences it is, but could you clarify that?
Sure. I'm sorry, yes, I can certainly do that. So, the fence that's outlined in red on the survey is the fence that's in question with the resident that's behind me. Okay? I believe you live at twenty-one Woodgate?
Yes.
Twenty-one Woodgate. But we were advised by the building department that if we're applying for variance, it should be for all the fences on the property at the same time. Okay? So, the two smaller diamonds, which if you scroll down off that survey, there's two other, no, yeah, there's two diamonds right there to the left, the brown ones. Those diamonds also have outfield fences. Those fences have been there since the inception of those diamonds, which I have to believe was the late nineteen eighties, early nineteen nineties. Okay?
I just had another question, too.
Sure.
In terms of like, your number is now, you have four hundred and fifty kids, but in the past, you, the diamonds accommodated twenty-five-hundred kids. That's such a dramatic difference in volume of kids.
Well
What is different about the way the fields are being used? I know we're just talking about the fences, but then there's, you know, other complaints kind of wrapped into this, such as noise, which, you know, I'm sure, you know, decades ago, they didn't have big booming loudspeakers, and, you know, the kids maybe just played baseball. You know, I live near Town Park, and I see a lot of baseball games being played there. And, you know, there's no loud music, or, you know, announcing or things like that, it's just, you know, baseball. So, I'm just curious, you know, what's different with the four-fifty versus, say, the twenty-five-hundred kids in terms of how the fields are being used?
Good question, very simple answer is aging population. I mean, if you take a look at the population in South Chikdawaga, and I'll give you a perfect example. So, I'm a past chief with South Line Fire Company. Okay? I've been associated with South Line Fire Company for thirty-eight years. The last year I was chief, we ran seven hundred and fifty calls a year. Okay? Today, I'm sorry, as of this month, we're going to be approaching close to fifteen hundred calls in a year. And the majority of those calls are for our residents that are seventy years or older. It's simply a matter of aging population. And, you know, you take a look at the school districts, the school districts, the same way, you have far less kids in the schools today than we did twenty, thirty, forty years ago. You know, it's just, you know, just the demographics that we have today.
And then if the neighborhood is aging, where are the kids coming from only Chikdawaga? Or is it like a much larger league where, you know, kids are kind of coming in from all over the, you know, all over the area?
No, most of
And cities?
No, most of the kids are from South Chikdawaga. I would say probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the kids are from South Chikdawaga. There were additional leagues in South Chikdawaga before. There was SCBA, which is South Line, I'm sorry, South Chikdawaga Baseball Association. They have since folded. There was another league, which was known as South Side, which is off of William Street. They're not in play anymore either. There was a couple other leagues that combined because their enrollments were so low. So, really, this is the only Little League on the south side of town. Yes? Which one fence, sir?
Backing up to Woodgate.
Well, if we move that fence, we'd lose the ability for the older kids to play baseball on that diamond. And if we move that fence, you know, whether it's a, and there were other concerns that were brought up. And again, you know, we do everything we can, and we'll continue to do everything we can to be a good neighbor. But even if we move that fence, you know, the issues of the noise will still persist. You know, we have to get the diamonds ready. Whether it's South Line Little League, Little League Diamonds, or it's the Town Park Diamonds, they are prepped by the town, the town, I'm sorry, the town Town Youth and Rec take care of the diamonds at the Town Park. They drag them, and they don't do anything different than we do. We drag our diamonds and get them ready to play ball, and get ready to play baseball. We cut the grass, we maintain the fields the best that we can. Like I said, we've made significant investments in the diamonds and in the property to make sure the kids have a good place to play, and it's a good wholesome atmosphere for the families and the kids.
I have a question. If the netting just was not there, if the netting was taken down, and most kids can't even hit a ball that far anyway, would that, is that even a consideration?
Well, yes, that would certainly be a consideration. My only fear would be, you know, if we get, you know, if the prevailing wind is coming out, and the kid, and you get a big kid that comes up there and hits the ball, and it's far over the fence, you know, we don't want to cause any property damage to the neighbors on Woodgate either. So, putting that net up there is just an extra precaution for us to make sure that the neighbors' properties are not being hit by any baseballs that may go over the fence. I know some of them had pools, some of them had lawn furniture, or other, you know, other recreational fixtures and furniture in their backyard. And, you know, we certainly want to see any damage or see anybody get hurt. That was the whole purpose of putting the netting up.
Even if you move the fence, the noise will still be there?
I'm sorry, what's that, sir?
Even if you move the fence, you will still have the noise?
Well, you know, a lot of things with the noise came about with us maintaining the field. So, obviously, we use a tractor or a zero-turn mower to cut the grass, just like anybody that has landscaping contractors cut their lawn, it's the same equipment that we use. We use weed whackers. These are some of the things that were brought up, that were creating too much noise because of the lawn equipment that we're using. And there is justification, too, for, you know, some of the music that was being played. And that is a, you know, that's a legitimate issue, and that's something that we will certainly address and continue to address, because we don't want that to be, you know, a disturbance for the neighbors. So, you know, when this came up at the end of, when this came up at the course of the season, you know, we pretty much curtailed the music, so we wouldn't have the music anymore. The one issue, the one issue that was brought up about the family picnic. So, the family the one issue that was brought up, um, about the family picnic. So the family picnic runs from twelve P M. I'm sorry, I apologize. The family picnic runs from ten A M. to four P M. The last Saturday or the second last Saturday of every July. And it's a, um, it's a time that we give trophies out to the kids. Um, we'd feed them hot dogs, hamburgers, pop. There's a couple bounce houses out there and usually by three o'clock, the kids are gone, okay? Um, but again, it's a, it's a picnic for the kids. Um, we did try something over the last couple of years where we ran a family movie night where we typically showed, um, a kid's baseball movie like Sandlot or something like that. We sh- you know, we showed it on a white screen on the side of one of the buildings. The kids came down. Again, you're keeping the kids off the street. You're keeping them with their friends. We're showing a movie on the side of a building. They're getting some free hot dogs and free popcorn and free refreshments and then after a couple hours, they're gone. But, um, again, I think, you know, we need to, a- and I, I certainly don't want to minimize, um, any of the residents' concerns because I, I, I understand their concerns. Um, I'm also just trying to say that, you know, this is a park, these are kids playing ball, they're not doing anything wrong. And, you know, I think that was something that we'd want to encourage with our, our residents and the kids and the parents of our community.
Um, Ms. Pataglia had a comment and I know Mr. Polarski had a, a comment as well.
On what he said, uh, we didn't tell him that guy, October storm tore the net down.
Yes.
And I got pictures of all that.
And the net was put, the net was put up because the girl that lives next door to me got hit with the ball.
Now, October storm, I got.
Okay, first of all, please don't point to me, okay? All right? Um, so if the, so if the, so if the net was torn down in the October storm, which was fif- which was fifteen years ago.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so the October, you're bringing up something from fifteen years?
No, that's how long it's been ripped up and you just replaced it this year.
Because we haven't been using the diamond for the last twelve years. What beer leagues?
We had beer leagues there.
No, we did not. I told you that. We're not gonna allow a little league.
Miss, miss.
For beer leagues.
Miss, Miss Pataglia.
Yes.
Just state your comment, please.
Okay, if, if the. If the association went to the town board for approval to put up the fence and to build the diamond in the first place, why weren't the residents that abut those properties, um, why weren't we notified of those meetings?
I, with all due respect, I was born in nineteen eighty-four, so I was about seven years old when they built the field.
Didn't they have?
So I, I cannot speak to what the town board did in nineteen ninety-two.
Okay. We should have been. And to the best of my knowledge, since I moved in in eighty-one, I wasn't.
Groups of people, they change and you don't know what the other guys are gonna do and.
Correct.
What plan, that's the whole problem.
Uh, one of the things that Mr. Koenig said was that the games go from six to eight. Um, they do on Diamond Z, which is the one right behind my house. On one and two, they go until ten o'clock, ten fifteen, ten thirty. Um, I'm lucky if the lights get shut off at eleven o'clock at night, um, the lights that shine into my house. So I'm, I'm kind of bothered by that. And as far as the music for the up to bats is concerned, it doesn't face his house. The speaker faces my house. It doesn't vibrate off his walls. It vibrates off my walls. And I get kids have to be entertained and they have to have something to do, so on and so forth, keeps them off the street corners, but this is my home. This is my home. This is what it looked like when I, seven years, eight years after I bought my house, after I had it built. That's what it looked like, not what it looks like today. And I, unfortunately, like I said earlier, I had a lot of pictures I could have brought that might have shown you exactly what I'm dealing with. Unfortunately, I didn't realize exactly the extent that I would have to go to to show you what's going on. And as far as when the fence was put in, I already provided for the town board Google Maps that show exactly when Diamond Z's fence was put into place. And I have a picture of what they're grading the diamonds looks like. That's the dust in my backyard. Would you like me to walk a little closer? I didn't print it because I wasn't able to.
I, I've been there, so I'm familiar, but if anyone else wants, wants to see, that's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay, that I can do.
Yeah, um, while we're doing this, Mr. Polarski, if you have a comment, just state your, uh, name and address, please.
Brian Polarski, fifty-two Christian Drive, Chictowaga, one four two two five. I'm here as a parent and past coach of, uh, children who played in Southline Little League. Um, we didn't leave the league on bad terms or anything. We left the league because our kids have outgrown the league. Uh, my daughter, you know, she became older playing, you know, older girl softball. There was no other field that the diamonds there. Um, she just outgrew it. So we went to Chictowaga Youth, another great league. But if you look around Chictowaga, um, we're down to two leagues really. Chictowaga Youth and Southline. There's no N C triple A, there's no Barnabas, uh, Southside. You mentioned a couple others way before my time and all that stuff. So we're seeing the sport of baseball leagues, you know, folding up, merging together. Southline is on a, uh, rebirth. It's growing. Um, if you look at numbers, you know, obviously COVID impacting many youth sports in general. Um, Southline's growing right now and, and, and it's a rebirth and that's a good thing. They're resurrecting a, a field that used to be there. By no means am I minimizing the feelings of the resident at all. I get it, you know, quality of life and that, that's her quality of life, not mine. Uh, you know, it's her noise. She deals with it every day, not mine. So I'm not gonna, you know, say anything on that, you know, she says it, I believe it, it's true. Um, but in regards to the fencing piece, I mean, I could see us just being here again next year with another issue. If the netting is taken down is, hey, I've gotten three, four balls kicked over. Now we need netting. Or hey, we pulled the fencing up for it. Now, if I was in charge of the league, I'd start questioning now, do we even need fencing? Do we just play the ball to the neighboring fencing that's already there? And then we have issues because no town code is saying that we actually need fencing in that outfield. Or does this town code apply to portable fencing that's not anchored in and permanent? So now if we get sport offense and go that route and butt it right up to it, I don't know these answers. I'm just throwing it out there. Um, I think we would be doing a disservice to the youth to kind of go backwards now in it when we've got a league now addressing the need in the community for older kids to play baseball and softball to thirteen and up, uh, age group. Um, I do have to disagree with the past president. I was fifteen years old and I was dinging it, all right? Um, I played. I put it all a little while Johnny B, all right? Um, um, I'm a huge baseball guy, you know, so I'm a little biased on it all, you know, uh, Bonaventure baseball and all that stuff, but so I, I see both sides of the coin here and whatnot, but at the end of the day, um, the fence was there. It has always been there. If the town failed back in the eighties, shame on the town if something was missed and all that, but at the same time, I totally understand the residents', uh, you know, quality of life issues as well.
Thank you. Sure.
You know, the, the, like, like I stated, uh, for us to relocate the fences, remove the fences, uh, reconfigure the diamonds, it would be a significant financial hardship for us. Um, you know, I can say rest assured, as long as I'm on the board, if the, uh, if the residents on Woodgate, um, have any issues such as, um, you know, noise or disturbances or, um, if they see kids that are in the outfield, um, you know, doing something they shouldn't be doing, um, you know, please contact the, the, um, the Little League. Uh, all the board members are listed on the Little League website. Um, you can send us an email and I can assure you that we'll address it in one way or the other. Um, but as far as the, the fencing's concerned, you know, we would like to maintain the fences as is. And as far as the rest of the inconveniences for the neighbors, you know, we want to be a good neighbor and we'll do whatever we need to do to help them out.
Are you, are the administration, uh, are they there every game, all game?
So there's at least one, if not two, board members at every baseball, um, at every, every evening or every day baseball's being played. So there's a total of twenty-five board members, okay? Out of those twenty-five board members, typically two, if not more, are at the games, um, every single day. And in many cases, the board members are also coaches too.
Well, I'm getting that, um, while they're there, in the neighbor season issue, is there a way that they can contact someone immediately?
They, they have. They've contacted the police. The police have come over.
No, I mean, one of you guys.
Um, yeah, they can, they can always come to the diamond. I, any, any resident can come to the diamonds and if there's a, if there's a, uh, a disturbance, an inconvenience or something along those lines, they can always come to the diamonds and, and ask for one of the board members. Just go to the concession stand and there's usually a board member in the concession stand or somebody walking around between the fields.
Um, is there a motion?
Do what? Exactly.
That's what I'm asking.
I, I.
Their request is for a variance or the fences that.
That's right.
Correct. For the height, no, it's for the setback of the existing fences.
Right.
Yep.
And like he said, they don't have the money right now, so we've got to sort of wait till they do have the money and somehow try to make it through this year without too much, you know, letting it go.
But if, I mean, if, if it's not gas, then the netting has to come down. And then the neighbor, the, any balls there, that out there would possibly go into the air. Or, and then the other variance is for, but that's it. If it's not gas, they have to do their fencing fifty feet.
Correct, fifty feet. That's a long way from a house and but somehow.
Fifty feet from, from the line, not from the property.
Yeah. Correct. And all this stuff should have been done before.
Well, well.
And, yeah, and you leave it.
When they built it.
Like I said, there's a bunch of people that come in, you're one bunch, then another bunch comes in, they got different ideas and never finish what first one started. And that's sort of the problem with the town. I mean.
It's happened in all our departments. People do different things now than they did.
I'm in, I know, I'm in that, in that, uh, same fire hall as you are. My brother, in fact, built the fire hall, walking before the fire, first fire hall was built, the wooden one. And he played music and he raised money for the fire hall, but of course, nobody will remember that. But there are, I, this organization for a long time, it's been good for the kids, okay? Let's put it that way. And it's still around. But we want to salvage it which way we can, how, which way can we salvage it? We can't do anything but number one because that's, it's already beyond our control. They're, what are you gonna do? So the only thing we can do is this one. Is the netting still gonna stay, it's paid for or, or what? So we don't need any, them to pay anything additional or anything.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion if you tell me what to do here. So the application, um, that the five-foot chain length with the twenty-foot net and the tap to capture baseballs along the baseball diamond, uh, budding the rear property line, which is a residential district, whereas the zoning law allows for a max, maximum height of six feet and also does not allow for any type of fencing, fence topping. Well, we already have it, right?
That is right.
So we're just extending it for another year. We need a, okay.
So you're making the motion?
Yeah, whatever.
Final motion for Ms. Worchak to grant the variances as requested. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Kenny Young. On the motion, Ms. Worchak.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young.
Aye.
Ms. Al.
Aye.
And I would say. Motion passed. Moving on to our next item, twenty-nine Vern Lane.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Christopher Klinko, yes. Christopher Klinko, twenty-nine Vern.
You guys just step outside. Thank you.
We're properly located at twenty-nine Vern Lane, chapter two sixty, article V, subsections two sixty dash forty-three B. The applicant proposes expanding the existing driveway at twenty-nine Vern Lane, one foot in front of the principal dwelling where zoning law does not permit. Chapter two sixty, article six, sub- subsection two sixty dash five nine eight three. The applicant proposes expanding the existing driveway at twenty-nine Vern Lane, three point eight eight feet. This expansion would be one point five feet from the property line, whereas zoning law requires a minimum of five feet. The expansion to the north, three point eight eight feet to the property line, has been expanded since at least twenty sixteen by the prior owner of the property. You have the floor.
So, uh, the second part is as the, uh, driveway is shown there, it was expanded by a previous resident. Um, and I'm asking for a variance to basically have that approved since it's already been done in the past before, um, before we bought the property. And the first part, I just want to extend it over one foot, uh, into the dwelling space as indicated by the, by the red area there to, uh, um, allow for off-street parking. I've got.
Right side, it's already been done. You're just asking for the relief now because.
Correct.
And you're asking now to also add the red.
That is correct. To, um, to allow for off-street parking, I've got a, a big, um, pickup truck that I can't get into the garage.
Door.
Yeah.
What's, what's we, what's?
That's into the garage.
Okay, so there's a wall there?
Yes.
So do.
So it goes just about a foot past that wall.
Okay, so you don't really need a, a, a variance then? Unless you've got.
Well, they do need some variance for the.
Other side.
The other side. Okay.
And then it's, then it's like grand father.
And then it's about a foot into the living space, uh, past that door. Uh, the red, the red goes about a foot past that.
Past the, okay, into the living space.
Yes.
Okay, so you need a variance there too then?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's probably, say, a foot or probably about.
Okay.
So yes, we're, I put the other.
Um, is there any other questions from the board?
No problem.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment on twenty-nine Vern Lane? Um, go ahead, Jane.
I'll make a motion to grant.
Okay, motion by Ms. Worchak to grant the variances as requested. I will second. On the motion, Ms. Worchak.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young.
Aye.
Ms. Al.
Aye.
And I vote aye. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
We have Shabia Akhtar, seventy-three Angela Lane. Is that, ma'am, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Kenny Young will read your request.
The advocate proposes expanding the existing driveway at seventy-three Angela Lane, nine feet in front of Principal Dwelling, including town right of way, where its only law does not permit. You have the floor.
Um, good evening, members of the board. My name is Shabia and I'm here on behalf of my parents who are requesting a variance to extend their driveway. Um, first, I want to express that the extension does not encroach on any of the neighboring properties. It remains fully within the boundaries of their own lot and the work was done to accommodate my father's medical issues. He is battling colon cancer and because of his condition, he requires use of a wheelchair to go to and from his appointments. Um, having additional driveway space is important so that we can safely load and unload his wheelchair and so that vehicles can pull in and out without blocking each other or needing to rely on the street parking. Um, the household includes six individuals, four of which have their own vehicle and with multiple cars and, and my father. And with multiple cars and, and my father's mobility needs, um, the original driveway simply just did not provide enough space. As a result, um, of parking on the street in the winter, we have received several parking tickets, which we are trying to actively avoid. My father, um, on his own, extended the driveway without realizing that he needed permission from the board because he was under the impression that because it was on his own property lines and didn't encroach on anyone else's, that he would be able to do so without the, uh, board's approval. However, when we received the notices, um, we applied for a variance right away. And we are simply requesting approval of the existing variance. There are also neighboring, um, houses that do accommodate three cars. And we are asking for the same accommodation that those, how neighbors have been
This is, uh, this was done last year, two years ago?
This was done earlier this year.
Earlier this year.
Yes.
But you're not asking to put anything else? Like it is?
It's just like it is.
Are you, do you need the apron separate or no?
Um, it just makes for easier, um, uh, egress, so if
Did you apply for an apron?
So I did call the highway department as you, um, asked, and we did ask for an inspection, but I'm not sure if anyone came by to inspect it.
So she needs an apron if she wants
I don't necessarily think we do if
Can't you just stop by the, uh, sidewalk and that would be it?
Yes, that's completely fine. We just need being
Get approval from LA.
Mm-hmm.
The right of way portion needs
Okay. So we just have to wait, I guess, on the highway superintendent? Okay, understood. Okay, sounds good. If there's anything else, um, that you guys would need us to do, we're more than willing to comply. But again, this was solely because of my father's medical issues that, um, this
Yeah, just, just so we're clear, you're aware what Susan's saying, right? Is that, that part where you went up to the curb and it's higher?
Mm-hmm.
With approval and a letter from the highway department, that can be cut.
I'm, yeah, they know that.
So, um, that's what, what we're getting at is as long as the highway, you can get that letter from the highway department, that that is acceptable?
Yes, I did call the highway department to request an inspection and they said they will have somebody go by and do one, but I'm not sure if they actually did anything.
All right, so I will just, uh, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to comment on Seventy-three Angelo Lane?
I have a quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Um,
All right, Heather.
Since we were talking about, um, the width of other driveways this evening, what is the current width now of the new expanded driveway?
Oh, it's twenty, twenty-five point five inches, which is, uh, sorry, feet, which is about a feet, uh, more than the standard twenty-four inch driveway. The example that you pulled up earlier, where the average two-car driveway accommodates twenty-four feet. So ours is twenty-five point five feet.
Okay, that, that's better than thirty. Great, thank you.
All right, um, I am going to make a motion to grant the variance as requested with the condition that you receive the approval from the highway department for the curb cut?
Well, I, I also want to note, they didn't actually cut
That's what we call it.
Okay.
Right, you're still driving on it?
Right.
Right.
Taking a portion of
Correct, of the hot, of the road space.
I see, okay.
So, so I, I will make it that, to grant the variance as requested with the condition that you receive that, approval from the highway department, that letter.
Okay.
Cause now what will happen is then hopefully they give you that letter. And then that will stay with the property forever. That that highway department allowed this driveway expansion, whether it's you, your parents, somebody else in the house. It's legal, the driveway is legal, okay?
Thank you so much.
Um, on, is there a second? Second by Mr. Kenny Young. On the motion, Ms. Wurchak? Mr. Kenny Young?
Aye.
Ms. Al?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye, you're all set.
Thank you, council members.
And I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
At nine thirty-nine, motion to adjourn, second, I'll second it. Kenny? Second, Kenny Y. On the motion, Ms. Wurchak?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny Young?
Aye.
Ms. Al? And I vote aye, meeting's adjourned.
I, I just have one quick question, so we don't have to come back at the next meeting, right?
No, so you will get a letter from the building department with our decision in seven to fourteen days.
Okay.
Just saying that we approved it tonight and it'll have in there the condition that you get that letter from the highway department.